And we are going to get the meeting started. So, thank you to everyone who's here and welcome to the 1,171st regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council and the city council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to city council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use for a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. Resolutions which are adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our acting secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Certainly, Commissioner McHugh.
Present.
Commissioner Banjero.
Here.
Commissioner Ventura. Commissioner Kara Magna is absent. Commissioner Smiley is present and Commissioner Long.
Here.
Okay, and then Chairman Willschau.
Is here.
Recording in progress.
Looks like we have most everyone back, maybe a couple of others. Okay, great.
Okay, great. It looks like everybody's back and our audience is back and Livonia Television is back. So, thank you everyone for that, for coming back. Apologize for the brief disruption there. We were just leaving off where I was saying that I'm here and I was thanking Madam Secretary for taking our role. So, we're gonna get back into the swing of things. This is Zoom. Things do happen, so we apologize for that. And by the way, just as a note, this is our last Zoom meeting we're going to be holding with the city. Our next meeting will be June 29th, I believe, is our next study meeting. That'll be an in-person meeting and then the regular meeting will be July, I believe it's the 6th, is that correct, Mark?
13.
The week after? Okay. So, then that will be an in-person meeting. So, for anybody who's, likes to follow along with the Planning Commission meetings and of course you can continue to watch them on channel Livonia Television, available on various cable networks and YouTube. So, also with us tonight, we have Stephanie Reese, Scott Miller from our Planning Department, along with Mark Toramina, our Planning Director, and we will introduce them as we go along in the meeting. And for those in our audience, the format of the meeting, this is a regular meeting, so we are going to start by reading off each agenda item. We have two primary public hearings on our agenda tonight and then approval of our minutes. We will start with our Planning Director to give background information about the petition. We'll ask that the petitioner, if they're in the audience, to raise their hand after that and we'll give them a chance to introduce themselves and discuss their petition with the commission. And then if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on any of these items, we'll also give you a chance to speak as well after hearing from the petitioner. So, that's the format of the meeting this evening and we are going to dive into the public hearing section of our agenda. And Madam Secretary, if you're ready, it'll be item number one.
Okay, item number one is petition 21-05-01-03. It's submitted by A.F. Jonah pursuant to Section 23.01 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number 543 as amended, requesting to rezone the west 150 feet of the property at 37276 Six Mile Road. It's located on the north side of Six Mile Road between Levan and Newburgh Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 8 from C1 Local Business to C2 General Business.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to rezone the property at 37276 Six Mile Road. This involves the westerly 150 feet of the subject property and the rezoning request would change the classification from C1 Local Business to C2 General Business. This is the zoning map showing the location of the property and as you'll notice, the site is surrounded by commercial land uses. Immediately to the east is the Key Bank Plaza, which is a multi-tenant shopping center that is Zone C2. To the north is the Zeal Credit Union Zoned OS Office Services and then there's a variety of other commercial land uses to the, to the south and to the west as well. This property is just over an acre in size. It includes 180 feet of frontage along Six Mile Road, has a depth of 270 feet. As I indicated, the west half of the property is zoned C1. The east 30 feet is zoned C2 and both of these zoning districts were established in the, in the early 1970s. So, this petition would really place the entire 1.1 acres of this property under the C2 classification. The site is the former, or is the location of the former Bank of America, which was built around 1979 and has been vacant for a number of years now. As you can see, the existing building is two stories in height and about 8,380 square feet in size. It does contain drive-through facilities, drive-up facilities located on the north side of the building and the access to the property is provided by two existing driveways on Six Mile Road. This is the existing survey of the property and this is a conceptual site plan. So, the purpose of the rezoning would be to allow for the construction of a full-service automated car wash, which is identified on the submitted plans as a Tommy's Express. Auto-wash establishments are treated as a waiver use in the C2 district. There are no provisions in the current C1 zoning regulations that would allow for such a use. So, the project would require the demolition of the former bank building. The car wash, as you can see, would be constructed on the east half of the property. The west half would be used mainly for parking and about 18 self-service vacuum stations. The vehicles would enter the site using the east driveway, then proceed north to the, an area right around the end of the building where there'd be pay stations. This would include two side-by-side lanes. Vehicles would then loop around the back of the building, enter the car wash, exit out the south end and then have the option of either exiting on the Six Mile Road or looping back north and entering one of the self-serve vacuum stations. The Livonia Vision 21 land use map does show the subject area as mixed development center. With that, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of items of correspondence that I'd like to read out.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
The first letter is from our Engineering Division and it's dated June 3rd and it reads as follows. "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the offer of petition. The property associated with the project is the address of 37276 Six Mile Road. The legal description for the parcel submitted with the drawings appears to be correct and should be used for future submittals, but the owner should provide a legal description for the area that is to be rezoned. We have no objections to the proposed rezoning at this time, although the following items should be addressed prior to submitting plans for the site plan approvals. The submitted drawings do not indicate any information for utility service leads or proposed water and sewer demands for the proposed development. Without this information, we cannot determine impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that special requirements may be imposed by the Great Lakes Water Authority depending on the proposed wash water discharged to the sanitary sewer system. The submitted ALTA survey does not include a recorded sanitary and storm sewer easement that runs across the east side of the property. It appears that the easement is running in the area of the stacking lanes to the east side of the building, but will need to be kept free of any proposed structures or foundations. Storm sewer, including storm water detention, will be required for the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance. We will perform a full review of the utilities once full engineering drawings are submitted to this department for permitting. Please note that any work within the Six Mile Road right-of-way, including excavations for service connections, will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Services." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance. That letter is dated June 7th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of Treasure dated June 3rd and signed by Linda Shield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions of our planning staff from any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Banjero.
A question for Mark. Mark, in regard to that storm water, storm sewer easement on that east side, do we know how big of an easement it is? I know the bank used to favor the west side of the property, so, and this, this new structure appears to be going a little bit more to the east.
Yeah, I can only surmise from the, the letter from the Engineering Department that while the building may not conflict with the easement, there's no indication whether there are any other structures. So, I'm guessing it's, it favors the far east side of the property and maybe does not impact the, the building as shown on this plan. Whether or not there are any accessory structures that would have to be adjusted, I don't know. So, I don't have that information unfortunately, Mr. Banjero.
Okay, thank you though.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Banjero. Any other questions for our planning staff? Okay, hearing no other questions, as our petitioner here in the audience with us tonight, I believe they are, we have Mr. Jonah and probably some of his other team members. I'm going to give Mr. Jonah a chance to unmute himself and introduce himself with his name and address for our record, please.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
We hear you. Good evening.
My name is Jordan Jonah. I'm at 4036 Telegraph Road, Suite 201 in Bloomfield Township, Michigan. Mostly here with Cliff Lunnie, who shares the same address, just a different suite number, Suite 200, who's across the hall. We see a lot, a lot of each other. First, thank you very much for having us tonight. We have a, as we discussed in the premier, premier meeting, we have a new development here of a car wash. It's a unique car wash. We feel like it's a very strong brand. It's a new concept that, it's actually an older concept that's formed out of Holland, Michigan, the west side of the state. It is a, it started as a family company. It is a franchise that is growing very rapidly. Besides Chick-fil-A, this is the second largest franchise in the country and it's here based out of Michigan, Motor City, Motor City Detroit, but Michigan here. In looking for new concepts, we always keep an eye out for good operations, good, good uses for our retail portfolio, which we just finished one center over at Eight Mile in Hagerty area. We also have another retail center at Plymouth and Farmington in Livonia. So, we are not strangers to Livonia. We've been there for quite a while. Cliff Lunnie is also here with me that could dive into the concept a little bit more and we could talk about any mixed, mixed-use planning or any questions anyone has with the, with the proposed use. I'm happy to talk about it in detail. We like to be upfront with everyone and show and talk about the operation here. So, with that, Cliff can take this over?
Yeah, and again, commenting on what Jordan said last week, you know, we, we hope we gave a pretty good overview of what Tommy's Express is, so, but we'll touch on it a little bit for anyone who may be new to go over some of the things. But Tommy Express is, is a very high-end efficient car wash. Everything from, you know, the water usage down to the environmental friendly detergents that we use to even the storm drain and recycling the water that we can from that standpoint. It is very, very efficient in all those avenues. The building is a very high-end building. The structure is primarily glass. You can see on the sides from the picture here that the sides and the actual roof is also glass and the glass is actually maintained and washed on an hourly basis based off the operations. And the, the top of the car wash actually has a roof that can raise itself and let out the humidity too in, in times where the moisture gets really high. So, it's a very, very friendly car wash for all, you know, for, for all people. In, in the past, a car wash typically is thought of, I hate to use the analogy, but in some of the older car washes that are a little bit closed and brick buildings and claustrophobic, if you will, a lot of the females didn't like using these car washes. In our car wash, we see over 50% of our usage is actually from females. And in the mixed-use comments, one of the things that Tommy's tries to do is, is really get next to the grocery store anchors or buy the Targets or really fit into our customers or the neighbors' daily habits. Almost 80% of our business is done on a membership basis. And so, we have a typical member for us may use the car wash as many as eight times a month to kind of give you an idea. So, it's a frequent use and it becomes part of the community and really, from our end, really fits into this area very, very nicely and we're really excited about having this in front of you right now.
All right. Thank you, Cliff. And just again, for everyone in our meeting this evening, including our audience members' information, we are really looking at the zoning of this property right now. This particular evening, we're considering the change of zoning from C1 to C2. And while we may have some discussion about the use of the property in this car wash use, you're not gonna hear in-depth discussion about the, the layout, the site, the colors and the design of the building because that would come back to us at a future meeting where a site plan approval would take place. So, the first step of the process is zoning and that's what we're gonna look at tonight, but there may be some limited discussion about the, the use of the site given the fact that the, they're proposing a car wash and we may need to know further information about it. So, Mr. Jonah, is there anyone else from your team with us this evening that would like to speak, do you know of?
I believe Eric Williams is on. He's with, he's a civil engineer that could dive into any detailed questions about the site plan or so forth. But just to be upfront with everyone, we understand that this is just a zoning meeting. I understand we cannot have an approval for the car wash, but if we could just be open and discuss it, just so we don't waste anyone's time a little bit and make everyone feel a little bit better, I imagine, because if we, if the car wash is not something that the city would like to see, it's no point in us coming back and going forth through the time and effort into, into putting this there. I understand we cannot get approval on the car wash. I, I do understand that, but if we could just have a small discussion about the, the use of the property, otherwise it's, it's a waste for us to go through the zoning process. And I understand, again, I, we understand we're not approval on the use, but just, just a discussion would be greatly appreciated if possible. And I'm happy to talk about development, master planning, traffic, water, any, anything that's on anyone's mind about the, the use here. I'd be happy to discuss in detail. We do a lot of developments through the, throughout Michigan and can talk about uses, master plans, traffic and so forth, so.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Jonah. We will probably have some discussion around the use of the site, obviously, given that you have a single-use site proposed, which is a car wash and the reason that, that's the reason that you're looking to change the zoning, because you need the C2 zoning for a car wash to be an appropriate use. And while we're discussing this, Mr. Toramina is flipping through some of these slides to give our viewers a chance to see pictures of what the proposal is and information about the business and what the property will look like. So, that's always very helpful and if you need to refer to any of those slides, you can always mention which one and he'll, he'll bring it up. So, is there anyone else from the petitioner's team who is in our audience and wishes to speak on the petition? If so, you can click raise hand and I'll make sure to get you unmuted. And if there is no one else from the petitioner's team right now who needs to speak, then I will go to the commissioners and see if there's any questions that anybody on our commission has for our petitioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
Thank you. To the petitioner, I, personally, I do not have a problem with this being a car wash. I do have concerns about traffic. I know we did touch on traffic at the study session and you kind of discussed how your car wash works with a conveyor belt and the ability to control traffic. Could you please elaborate on that and discuss that for the record here? Thank you.
Yes, of course. Traffic and any development is also, is always a question and we do do traffic studies and we find the best and we let the experts handle this. What's what, what is unique about a car wash is that the stacking lanes are before you go in. So, when the cars pull in is where the stacking is and that's where majority of the wait time is. Now, when a car goes through the, the car wash, a typical conveyor, a typical, a typical track system has only so many, so much time between each car. Either you catch it on one certain car lengths that go. This is on a conveyor belt, so we can actually slow the track down or speed it up. So, the majority of the stacking is before you go in. If there is a backup of, of cars that need to, that are egressing the property, the property, we can simply slow the belt down and take a slower car wash through and let traffic ease up before we actually put, push cars out. So, the beauty with the car wash is that it stacks before it goes in and we can control the output, which is a huge plus to traffic consultants. It's, it's a great avenue to control traffic with speed and when it is timed, so, so when the timing, the lights are timing and the systems are running, we know how to, to run cars a little faster through to, to get them out or slow them down.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead and finish.
No, that, that's, pretty much it's.
Okay. So, I understand that and you know, I'm, certainly you do have a lot of stacking room beforehand and you got, I think, three lanes there, so, you know, I, I can understand that. That's kind of a unique intersection. You have a couple of Michigan left turns there and they kind of, it can already, you have the, the Jersey Mikes next door, which I frequent from time to time and I know that it can be very hard just to turn out of that when, and that driveway is pretty much right next to where your exit driveway would be. So, my concern is, you know, gonna be in the winter, you know, during your busy time, we, we, everybody's getting their salt off their car, maybe you're not backing up going in, but it can be hard to turn right out of there as there's a lot of people coming out of that, out of that Michigan left turn lane. And now you, you've talked about the conveyor belt and how you control that and I like that system. How can you elaborate more on how that's monitored? So, how many employees do you have there? Who's watching that and who's paying attention to the traffic or the fact that they're stacking up so that you don't have the conveyor belt letting out a car into another car as they're backed up on the exit?
Of course. And the true answer is as many as we need. We are not shy to have as many employees as we need to make this the right use for the site. Typically in car washes, it, the tactic is 90% majority input, not output, but we will do everything we physically possibly can with employees, with traffic consultants to make this the best site. Typically, when you see a car wash, it, it's the stacking in the, I have a car wash across the street from us and they have about a one or two car stacks to get out on Telegraph and it backs up on Telegraph before you get into the car wash, which we will not have an issue here because we have a very large stacking lane. It's the input that usually gets backed up and how they get it, throw car, they maneuver cars into the tracks rather than the output. But simply put, we will have as many employees as we need. We have a minimum of three here and they are professional employees. It's not a typical car wash where one guy's taking cash and spraying down your car at the same time. That's not the operation we're looking for here. That's not the operation we'll have. It's not the operation that I, I would ever want to be a part of. We want to be a professional. Everyone's in uniforms that are courteous and controlling every aspect of the business, including traffic. I know traffic is a, is a major issue, but we also are able to stack a lot of cars before they even touch, touch the road, which is a huge plus and you don't see that in many car washes today, so.
And I, I would just touch on the, you know, the conveyor belt system. We don't have someone guiding someone in and spraying, which can lead to, you know, cars, you know, being backed up from that standpoint and, and really the throughput on the front end that, that Jordan's talking about. Ours is a conveyor belt where they drive on, the conveyor belt takes you and you go through. Same thing on the exit. We don't have anyone that's hand drying the cars or anything from that standpoint, so it allows them to immediately, when they get done, there's no backup where a car will stack, another car will stack and then they start going. Ours are, by the time they get out, they can go right in exit, either go to the vacuums or they can exit onto the road. So, that efficiency is, is really helps out a lot in, in the traffic flow.
Okay. I mean, again, my, you know, I think you got plenty of space for the, for the input. I'm, I'm not worried about that, but I am worried about the output. But again, this is a zoning meeting and I'll, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other commissioners wishing to speak to our petitioner on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banjero.
Just a question with regard to the wash water discharge. Can you guys just explain, just briefly, how, what you do to manage that and the impact it has on the, either the sanitary sewer or the storm sewers?
Sure. So, to give you an example, if a typical car wash, if you were to wash your car at home, you're gonna run about 100 gallons of water on average. And on our car wash, we run about 41 gallons. Of that 41 gallons, we recirculate almost 14 gallons. So, we run about 33% is recirculated water based off of our tunnel system. What you can't see there is the water actually goes down and it goes into a tank system and then we recirculate as much of that water as we can. So, the discharge is, is much less. We're probably looking at a discharge total of about, yeah, 28 gallons is, is the average that we're using, plus the third, that, that doesn't show as there's another 13 recirculating there. But discharge is probably gonna be somewhere between 15 and 19 gallons and of that discharge, again, we're trying to recirculate some of that too also on there.
So, none of the soapy water is going into the system?
When, into the, yes, it's not going into the sewer system. No, we're recirculating that. And we can get, I mean, as this goes on, we have very, very detailed studies that we would get the engineering and let them take a look and, and everything from that standpoint. But just to give you an example, even the water line that comes into a facility, we typically are using about a two-inch water line and, and nothing bigger. So, you know, in a lot of, you know, a Jersey Mikes probably has an inch and a half to kind of give you an example, if not a two-inch. So, a two-inch water line is, it's just, we don't have a tremendous demand on the water because of, you know, the recirculating and what we do. And then we have a, a tank that always stays fill, full. So, we fill that up right off the bat and then that tank always, you know, that's, that's what continues to recirculate. There is an evaporation too in these and so the evaporation rate is roughly 20% on a national level. So, we do run into that also on here, so that affects the discharge also on that.
Okay. And you know, there's always the issue of oil, right? So, I assume you have some type of oil separation or what do you do with that?
Yeah, we, we clean, and so when that water comes down, we actually clean that water and it goes through a filtering system that we have. You know, that's what we call the tank and that's underneath, that, that goes through there. So, the discharge of oil and everything like that, you would So the discharge of oil and everything like that, you would not see on, on the, on the property or anything from that standpoint. That's all filtered and cleaned by us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mark, if I could just touch on the traffic count one more time. If you, the stacking model on the page you're flipping through shows pretty good right here. So Commissioner Long, the stacking is in the, in the ingress, the egress we could control. So that's what gives us the help of getting cars out on the road. We could literally give a, a car a slower car wash where the ingress will wait a little longer and we could slow traffic, which is the beauty about this whole system too. So that picture kind of shows you can let one car out at a time as, as we need, so.
I, I get it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jonah. Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners for our petitioner?
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Jonah, I don't recall that you and I have ever met, but I've done business with members of your family. And the Jonah name is generally associated with high quality developments and you've done some, some nice things here in town. However, I'm not a supporter of your petition. For a couple of reasons. Number one, there are at least three car washes already in town between one and three miles away from this location. And if you look at where they are, they are either associated with other service stations, automobile service stations or fast food locations. This is not the character of this area. So I'm, I'm not supporting a C2 zoning here because I think it allows uses that are out of character with the existing development around this site. In addition, members of this commission and the city, including Mr. Tormenta, have spent the last two years devising the new master plan and the underlying rewrite of the, of the ordinance. It's a thoughtful plan and it's, one of its salient features, one of its major features is it allows some very creative development in a C1 zoning district. And I for one would be interested in seeing what you or anybody else could do in a C1 zoning with the new zoning ordinance. And so I'm not prepared to vote for this and to trash the brand new zoning ordinance and master plan before the ink is even dry. But I would be interested in your bringing back something that was consistent with the new master plan and that certainly I know within the capabilities of your organization. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, for your comments. Is there any other planning commissioners who have any comments to make or questions to ask of our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McHugh.
Just to kind of piggy up, piggyback up on what Mr. Ventura just said. I guess I'm a little curious as to what, I know we don't just decide to plant a car wash somewhere, right? We've obviously done some studies and some investigation. What was your thought process as to why this is a good location for a car wash? Because again, Mr. Ventura had said there, there, there are several car washes around this area. Why do you think this was a, a good place for this particular one?
Mr. Jonah?
Yes. First, I deal with a lot of master plans all the time in, in our business and I do understand them very well. Master plans in my mind are a framework on what and how a grand scheme of development should go. I personally think it's wrong that a property sits for years and years with no, not much action on it. And I did check into the history on what was going on with this property in the past. There has been very, very little movement on this property. Regardless of what zoning it is, there's always a petition to say, hey, this is, this is new life to this area. I am a firm believer of bringing what works to a certain area. There's a, the, the car washes within the distances are not the typical car wash that we, we want to construct here. It is new, it is vibrant, it brings a woman shopper to the area. I personally think this type of car wash should be in master plans to bring the shopper to the area. I think in master plans also that there should be an inner, cross easements with interconnection between the properties. I don't think that it should just go out onto roads. I think these three properties should be linked. So you can get a car wash and go to Jersey Mikes or Jersey Mikes is next door without getting on the road. I think that is more mixed use and actually having a, a shopping center with a few different uses in there. That's probably going to be a, a lot of traffic too, to an area. But this is an everyday traffic that brings the right shopper to the right area. I am a firm believer that this is a catalyst on new development. I think it, in my mind, it sparks something in this area that is needed for a building that sat vacant for four years. If there was another use, it would have been here regardless of how much or where and when and how. There was an idea with this property, it would have, it would have bloomed by now. I think this is a great use for a property. I don't think auto driven should be looked down upon. Auto is always going to be here, whether we're driving or a computer's driving us. The car should be clean and safe. I like the interconnectivity, which I am all for. And if you, if you did approve this and said they want future interconnectivities throughout the site, I would sign a future easement to connect these sites when other areas are going to be redeveloped. But to look at this as a whole and let this one sit, I think this is a good catalyst. It's a new edgy concept that brings life to this area and a shopper for the most part. The, the woman is a shopper that would get a car wash. Typically, they're brick buildings. I take my wife's car to the car wash because she doesn't like going through there. I like the ability to bring the right shopper to the right area, especially in this district. It, it sparks a, a new development, which escalates from there. I personally think that this is the right use for this property. I don't see another use, maybe a, I, I couldn't even tell you what it, what could go here right now. It's been sitting vacant for a long time. It needs new life. This area needs new life. I, I believe in proactive developments. I know that because I'm a developer, of course. And I like new, new concepts, new ideas to bring new customers to shop, to look and say, wow, that's a cool concept that's brought to the city of Livonia. I personally like that. You know, three, man, three years ago now, I know it's three years because when I was going through the process of the PUD at, between Seven and Eight Mile and Hagerty Road, the idea of multifamily came out that wasn't in the thought process. It's a huge shopping district with a theater, with Costco, next to a Costco gas station that we wanted to put multifamily. It was out of the box and thank goodness it works. It's, it doesn't always fit the mold and that's what makes areas good and great. My personal view on development, I like being a little different. I like having the edgiest concept come to an area and be the catalyst, say, I'm going to that intersection now for that use. And I'm also going to stop at Jimmy John's or Jersey Mikes or pick up the groceries.
Mr. Jonah, I, I, be it, I, I certainly don't want to speak for Mrs. McHugh. I believe her question was more targeted toward what, what have you, what research have you done to say that this is, this is an appropriate use for this area? Have you done any research into the demand for a car wash in this area to see that this is the appropriate location for this?
Absolutely, we have. So I'll comment a, a couple of things. One, in regards to the other car washes in the area. Close, in, in, you know, from our research, the closest car wash that, that is to the area is actually about just over a mile away. And that car wash is actually in, in Northville. And the next closest one is down at, at Five Mile in Levine. And, you know, we're just not, that's a great car wash, no disrespect, but the, the car wash that we're building is a completely different car wash. I mean, that's an older car wash that has the, the block building. We're, we're building something that we try to have fit into the community. So to, to answer the, the question a little bit more, what research have we done? We look at, you know, the, the population within a, a density of the area. We look at the traffic and we really want to be partners into the habits that they currently have. So typically in the old school thought of, of a car wash is that, you know, you're going to get in your car and specifically go to the car wash. Or the example of you go get gas and you go through the car wash that's attached to the gas station. This is nothing like this. This is more like going to, you know, bushes and, and getting your shopping done. And, you know, as you leave, going and getting a car wash, you know, either before or after. So we really look at this area as an area that fits into the community surrounding with the neighbors and then also to the current traffic flow that they're already on. So we're not looking to change people's traffic flow. We're looking to enhance it and be a part of their daily activity.
Okay. Mrs. McHugh, did that answer your question?
Think so.
Okay. All right, good. I just wanted to make sure that you had a.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you restating that, but yeah, I, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, I don't, certainly don't want to speak for you, but I want to make sure you had a succinct answer to your question. So, thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments from the commission for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
For the petitioners, and you know, no disrespect or anything, but you've often referred to this car wash as a draw for women. You know, is that like, is that a statistic that's shown with this car wash throughout the United States that is drawing women to the, to the area? I just don't, I mean, I, I see if it's a good car wash, people are going to go to it. I just don't see the reason why women are going to be drawn to that because I don't know if my wife would be, but maybe some would. I just, I don't, I don't know. That was the angle you guys were, were pushing. And I, I just, can you explain that to me? Like, is that, is that how it's been proven across this United States at all the other car washes?
Yeah, and there's a lot of different national studies and obviously there's different areas and, and that, that have different impact. But the, the, the mentality or a lot of the older studies would show that a car wash is, is a little bit more heavily on, on the male side than the female side. In our internal numbers that we have, we see almost 60% of our customers as female. And so that, that's where we get this. And, and it does drive, what it does is it, it's, it has them frequent the area a little bit more than they would if they typically weren't. If they go on a grocery stock, shopping once or twice a week, you know, sometimes if they have, you know, the, the, the car wash, that's added to another time when they're in the area and they're going through, so.
The, the open concept throughout Tommy's has been well received for the women, for the women customer too. Being an open class concept instead of a brick building is a major plus on their surveys and their statistical data that they collect and through their customer base is where that, that information is gathered.
And then, you know, there's the only other thing that, that we could add to that is that a- a- as you see with, with a car wash, you know, our car wash doesn't involve someone on the front end. Sometimes you'll have, you know, but, but I've had the experience where I'm going to the car wash and someone's kind of, you know, forcefully, you know, a little bit more in your face and saying, come on, pull up now, put it neutral and, and some of that. We don't have any of that. They, they drive up on the conveyor belt and there's a real ease that the females tend to have on that. And the same thing on the way out. On the way out, we don't have, you know, two or three males kind of going over the car and, you know, and, and leaning over the windshield and wiping everything down. It's just not part of our, our system, our automated system. And so we, we think that, you know, there's no statistic that shows that, but there's certainly a comfort level that I think the female has on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions, comments for our petitioner before we go to our audience? If not, I do have one sort of follow-up question to sort of dovetail off of some of the previous questions for you, Mr. Jonah. And that's regarding the environmental impact to this site. You know, we see with gas stations, for example, they put a very significant impact on the property in terms of the, you know, gas tanks and other things that get put underground, which make the site very difficult to be reused in the future for any other purpose because of the changes that are made to that site. And my question is in regards to this as a car wash, if this property is converted to a car wash, what sort of impact is there to this site if this car wash were to not succeed? Or 10, 20, 30 years in the future, they decide to close and put something else on this property? What, what sort of remediation or, or work is involved to make this site usable for a different purpose in the future? Or is it not, and it's always going to be a car wash going forward? If you could speak to that, Mr. Jonah?
There is no environmental impact that we know of. And we've looked into that quite a few, quite a bit with Tommy's Express. If this didn't make it as a car wash, the building would come down and you could use it, this land is virtually anything. And there are ways to clean up land, mitigate land too, but this is not going to be that case. There's not a environmental impact that would negatively affect the future life of this land by any means.
Okay. So there's no things put underneath the car wash in terms of a track or, or mechanicals or, or oil collection or any of those types of things that happen underneath the ground?
No. The tank that we clean and maintain. The water, the tank that we clean, but that wouldn't be an environmental impact, no.
Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you. If there is no other questions from any of our commissioners at this time.
Mr. Chair, can I just double click, can I just double click on that one?
Definitely, Mrs. McHugh. Go ahead.
So what we're saying is, is that the previous properties that you've had have had no environmental issues? Do, that you know of or that, I, I guess, me coming from the banking industry, right? We know that it's always going to be an environmental questionnaire. And, and you're saying that the, the properties that you have had that have used the same type, this, this same franchise of, of car washes have, to your knowledge, not had any environmental issues, correct?
For Tommy's Express, this particular car wash, not an older car wash that has huge hydraulics that go in through it. It's not that type of system, no. This is a whole different system on how they do it. Environmental is a huge factor in Tommy's Express because it's a car wash. So they take extra measures. They actually even donate, part of every car wash goes to a, a water fund also for real.
Third world countries.
Third world countries. Environmental is a huge factor on their publicity for this company. No, I, I do not see anything that would, would harm this land for future use. If there was, there would be a due care plan that we would put in place, but I don't, there is not, no. And we would test the land and make sure it's right. But no, there is not anything that Tommy's Express has that would impact this, the future of this land beyond a car wash.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh, for that follow-up question. I appreciate that. Any, anything else from any of our commissioners at this time? If not, I will go to our audience and see if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition. If so, you can click raise hand. And when you do that, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. I don't see anyone in our audience clicking to raise their hand or speak on this item. So I will ask for anybody else on the commission one more time if there's any questions or comments before I go to our petitioner for the last comments. I don't see any questions from the commissioners. Mr. Jonah, any final comments before we close the public hearing?
No, just thank you very much for listening us tonight, for your time.
Great. Thank you for your comments. And I will then close the public hearing at this time and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McHugh.
I would like to offer a denying resolution that the request to rezone the property at 37276 Six Mile Road from C1 to C2 is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show that the proposed change of the zoning is necessary and needed to utilize the property. Number two, that the proposed zoning change is not supported by the Livonia Vision 21, LV21, future land use.
LV21 Future Land Use App, which shows that this site is a mixed development center. The master plan specifies that automotive oriented uses such as gas stations, auto repairs or drive-through facilities are not appropriate in this envisioned pedestrian friendly category. Number three, that it has not been shown that the proposed change of zoning and the intended use of the property as a full-service automated car wash would be compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area, particularly with respect to the normal traffic flow and circulation patterns in the area. And number four, that the proposal fails to conclusively deal with all of the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents.
Okay. Is there support for that motion?
Or?
Okay. We have a motion to deny, uh, offered by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion from any of our commissioners on the motion? If there's no discussion on the motion, then if our secretary is ready, please call the roll on a motion to deny.
Certainly. Uh, Commissioner McHugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Ventura.
You're muted, Pete.
I think you're muted.
He's fighting his mute button.
Aye. The transfer?
It came through. Commissioner Bonjero?
Aye.
Commissioner Smiley votes aye. Commissioner Long?
Nay.
And Chairman Will Shaw?
Uh, votes aye. Motion passes to deny. This is a recommendation of a denial, which will go on to city council and that meeting will be held at a future date, uh, and they will receive our recommendation for denying this rezoning. So that takes care of this item for this evening. Thank you to Mr. Jonah and your team for coming this evening and, uh, you will be contacted by the, either the planning department or the city council with, uh, when that, uh, next meeting will be held. So thank you for coming this evening. And with that, if there is, uh, nothing else on this item, we'll move on to item number two. Madam Secretary?
Certainly. Uh, item number two is petition 21-05-02-08. It's submitted by Community Financial Credit Union requesting approval of all plans required by section 11.03N of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance, uh, number 543 as amended in connection with a proposal to construct a freestanding credit union with drive-through facilities within the parking lot of the Mid Five Shopping Center at 29441 through 29583 Five Mile Road. It's located on the south side of Five Mile Road between Middle Belt and Henry Rough Roads in the northeast quarter of section 23.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Some background on this, uh, project. Again, a request to construct a credit union with drive-through facilities and this would be at the Mid Five Shopping Center, which is at the southwest corner of Five Mile and Middle Belt Roads. Uh, the overall shopping center site measures around nine and a half acres. It contains an 86,000 square foot L-shaped, uh, shopping complex. Uh, and as you can see from the aerial photograph, um, the storefronts face both Middle Belt Road east as well as, uh, north towards, uh, Five Mile Road. A main tenants in the shopping complex currently are Ace Hardware and Los Trace Amigos Restaurant. Um, as you can also see from the aerial parking, the majority of the parking is located between the storefronts and the adjacent roads. The credit union is proposed in, in the area of the parking lot that is, uh, is here, uh, adjacent to Middle Belt Road. And most of the site, as you can see from this map, is zoned C2 general business. Uh, the C2 category, uh, does allow for banks and credit unions as a permitted use, however, any form of drive-up, uh, facility is treated as a waiver use. So the proposed credit union, uh, would be located again in the easterly part of the main parking lot. Uh, the building would be one story in height and approximately 3,600 square feet in size. Uh, the main entrance is here in the southeast corner of the building facing Middle Belt Road.
Mr. Toramina, I hate to interrupt you, but, uh, we don't see your screen.
You're not sharing. I don't think you, you're not sharing. I don't, there you go.
I apologize. So, and, so this is, and I, just to go back real quick, uh, this was the zoning map that I referenced previously and the aerial photograph showing the, identifying the location of the site where the credit union is proposed. The, the, the site consists of this entire area. This is that L-shaped building that I referenced, uh, and this is the pad, if you will, for the, uh, for the proposed credit union, uh, which is the same area identified here on the, uh, rendered, uh, site plan.
All right. We're up to speed.
A one-story building, about 3,600, uh, square feet with the main entrance facing, um, uh, really in the southeast corner of the building facing Middle Belt Road. Uh, parking, as you can see, would be available on the north, uh, the west, or excuse me, the north, the e, east as well as the south sides of the building. Uh, the site plan does show a new driveway onto Middle Belt Road. This would, uh, be restricted to right in and right, uh, out movements, uh, only, uh, but the site would also be accessible at two other locations, uh, within the shopping center, uh, drive aisles, uh, one here in the northwest corner of the site and then one in the, uh, in the south, or excuse me, the northwest and then the southwest as well. Um, the building itself would be set back 65 feet from Middle Belt Road, which is, uh, conforming, uh, the drive-up operations, uh, would be on the west side of the building, uh, identified, uh, here. Uh, it would include an overhead canopy, which is, uh, illustrated on the plan as well. Uh, that canopy is roughly 40 by 28, uh, and 11 feet in height. As you can see here, there would be, uh, three service lanes where the drive-up customer, uh, traffic would commence along the north side of the, uh, building and then wrap around to the west side. Uh, there is, um, uh, there, there appears to be, uh, ample, uh, stacking, uh, the lane widths appear to be adequate, uh, as well. Once a transaction is complete, uh, the, uh, the vehicle, uh, the driver would have the option of either looping back around the building and exiting out on the Middle, Middle Belt Road southbound or have the option as well of, uh, of exiting out to, uh, the drive aisle here in the shopping center, uh, where there's another access point, um, onto Middle Belt Road, a little further from the intersection that would allow for, uh, left-hand, uh, turns. Um, one, uh, minor issue is the fact that there's no bypass lane, so if a vehicle commits itself to, uh, the turn here, it really has no chance of, of exiting, uh, the, the traffic lanes. That only opportunity would really exist along the north side, but it, but it's, uh, not really a major issue, uh, for, uh, for bank properties as it is for some restaurants. Um, no enclosed dumpster is shown, but that's not uncommon for, uh, for banks and credit unions. They, uh, they usually handle that separately, uh, within the building, uh, with a service picking up the trash for obvious, uh, security reasons. Uh, all site lining, uh, shown is, uh, 20 feet in height. In terms of the, uh, design of the building, uh, it would be a mix of face brick, uh, stone as well as ephesus. As you can see, the main entrance would be defined by this tower element. Uh, the building would have a peak roof line that would be covered in asphalt singles. Uh, the overall height, uh, at the highest point is 24 feet six inches and then the drive-up canopy would, uh, would actually contain similar features, including a pre, peak roof and, uh, stone columns and, uh, asphalt shingles. So I don't have a, uh, a photograph of that, but the rendering does show how the canopy extending out, uh, would really consist of, of a lot of, of the same features. A fully detailed landscape plan was, uh, submitted, uh, with the application that shows, uh, trees and shrubs, uh, around the, uh, the building. Uh, some of the trees in these landscape islands, uh, would be, uh, replaced. Uh, we're suggesting that a couple more trees be added to the southeast corner of the site where, uh, with frontage on Middle Belt Road. In terms of parking, uh, the required parking, uh, for this is based on a ratio of one space for every 160 square feet of usable floor area, and we apply this to the entire shopping complex as well as the, uh, proposed credit union. So as it exists today, Mid Five currently has 430 parking spaces, um, excuse me, it currently requires 430 parking spaces. Uh, currently there are 448 parking spaces. So, so the site presently without the credit union has a surplus of 18 parking spaces. Uh, when you add, uh, the increased parking demand for, with the credit union, uh, and the, uh, reduction in parking spaces with the development, uh, that, that changes the, uh, the, the parking, uh, requirement, uh, to 448 spaces. Ironically, it reduces it to 430 spaces, uh, that would be available. So the site goes from a surplus of 18 parking spaces to a deficiency of 18 parking spaces. But I will say that under the new, uh, Livonia Vision 21 ordinance, uh, the actual parking requirement would be roughly 420 spaces. So depending on timing, uh, parking may not be an issue. They may not have to go to the zoning board of appeals. It depends on how, uh, quickly the, uh, the new Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance is adopted by city council, uh, but it may erase the need for any variance, uh, with respect to, uh, parking. Um, underground detention is shown here in the north part of the, uh, site. We haven't analyzed the, uh, the pro, project for any signage, but they would be entitled to, um, one, one wall sign as well as a ground sign if this property is, is, uh, split off from the, uh, uh, the parent shopping center property. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, uh, if I could read the correspondence, we have a number of items.
Yes, please.
Uh, first letter from the engineering division dated May 14th reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering divi, engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. The property associated with the project is assigned the address ranges of 29441 through 29583 Five Mile Road with the address of 29441 Five Mile Road being assigned to the overall parcel. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, although the following items should be addressed prior to submitting plans for permitting. The submitted drawings indicate proposed service leads for the utilities that will need to be revised. The sanitary sewer lead is shown connecting to a manhole that does not exist. The only public sanitary sewer main available for a service connection is located on the south side of Five Mile Road. Also, the proposed sewer lead is shown crossing through the built-up patio area of the existing restaurant. The water lead is shown connecting to an existing private line that services the plaza to the west of the proposed site. Connections to private mains are not allowed if the parcel is to be split from the overall plaza property or have a different owner than the plaza. Water is available on the east side of Middle Belt Road to service the proposed building. Storm sewer, including stormwater detention, will be reviewed by Wayne County as they have jurisdiction of the existing storm sewer within the Middle Belt Road right-of-way. We will perform a full review of the utilities once full engineering drawings are submitted to this department for permitting. Please note that any work within the Middle Belt Road right-of-way, including excavations for service connections, will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Services. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the, um, Livonia Fire and Rescue, uh, Department of Public Safety, excuse me, uh, Mark, dated March 15th and signed by Greg Thomas, uh, Fire Marshal. Uh, another letter of no objection from the, uh, Department of Public Safety Division of Police dated June 4th and signed by Sergeant, uh, Scott Chapansky of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated June 7th that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, parking spaces are required to be 10 feet by 20 feet and double striped. Two, signage has not been reviewed at this time. A variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for any signage not in compliance with the sign ordinance. Three, proposed plan does not show a dumpster enclosure. The commission and/or council may wish to address how trash will be stored and collected on-site. Four, the number of parking spaces proposed for this entire site will be deficient. A variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required to maintain this deficiency. This department has no further objections to this petition." A letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter, uh, from the Department of Finance, uh, that reads, "I have reviewed the addresses connected with the above noted petition. The following water bill charges are due to the city of, uh, to the city of Livonia." Uh, and then one, two, three, four, five, six different, um, bills, including one pass due, uh, totaling, uh, $4,619.79. Uh, that letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, and the letter is dated on May 19th. And then, uh, lastly, we have a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated May 27th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extent of the correspondence.
Well, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions from any of our commissioners for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bonjero?
Uh, for Mark. Mark, um, the letters from engineering and, um, the city were, uh, they're probably at least a month old. Does, uh, some of that information change? I know the water issue came up, the water bill came up last week and then the, um, sanitary sewer connection and stuff. I think the petitioner stated they were getting an easement from the owner of the shopping center.
That's correct. Um, this issue did come up at the study meeting last week. Uh, the petitioner is aware of, of all the issues that were outlined by, uh, the various departments and I believe they are addressing those, hopefully to, uh, to each department's satisfaction, including, uh, where the uni, the utility connections would come from and any past due, uh, uh, water bills, um, I'm assuming have been taken care of, but, um, but that's something that council won't, won't, uh, it won't advance this petition unless all those past due bills are taken care of. I can assure, assure you of that.
That's what I figured. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions from any of our commissioners for planning?
Mr. Chair? Yep. Um, how important is that, uh, pass lane, uh, Mark? And do they think about having just two lanes for, um, you know, outside service?
Yeah. I'm gonna have to ask that question really, uh, to the petitioner, how important it is. You know, we've all been to, you know, seen these situations in the past. Uh, you know, there are many, many times you have the opportunity to go around, uh, the drive-up facility, uh, when you, when you choose not to use it because for whatever reason, either make an errant turn or, uh, it's too, too busy. In this case, uh, depending on where you're at in the queue, you might be able to back up and exit out this driveway. Um, I, I don't think it's a significant, uh, issue in this case, just because of the proximity of, of this opening right here, uh, to not have one. I, I would not like to see the elimination of this green space in favor of, of a traffic lane. So I think it's something that we can live with. Whether or not they, um, you know, I'm guessing their, their prototype calls for these three service planes, but I'll let them answer that question, whether or not they can live with two.
Okay. That's exactly where I was going because I thought where that green space was would be a, a good drive-through, but I would not like to see that be made a drive-through or a pass lane. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Uh, any other questions of, uh, our planning staff from any of the commissioners? If not, I believe our petitioner is in the audience this evening. If you could, uh, click raise hand, we'll get you acknowledged and allow you to talk to your petition. And we have Mr. Clark. Let me, uh, hey, let's see here, click the right button. Good evening, Mr. Clark. You can unmute yourself and introduce yourself with name and address to start.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Doug Clark with the Case Group. Thank you for, uh, taking a look at our site plan tonight. We do appreciate your time. Uh, my address is 28175 Hairy Road, Nova Island, Michigan, 48377.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, is there anyone else, uh, from your team, uh, that would like to speak at this time? Or do you, are you going to be giving the, the bulk of the presentation here?
Well, I, I've got, uh, three other folks, uh, that may chime in if, you know, if there's questions. I've got Craig McDonald, who's the civil engineer. Um, I'm sorry, excuse me, he's the architect. Uh, Leslie Accardo, who's the civil engineer, and, uh, Matt Kornmeyer, who's the current center owner as well. So they may have an opportunity or, you know, once again, if there's any questions that, uh, that I can't answer, certainly, uh, they'll, they'll, uh, chip in.
Okay. Great. We'll call on them or they can always raise their hand if they feel it's, uh, appropriate time for them to make a comment, uh, in regards to any of our questions. Uh, so thank you for that. And, uh, is there anything that you would like to say at this time in terms of presenting, uh, this credit union to us for approval? What, uh-
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I can give you a little background on, uh, you know, the credit union and, uh, we've done work with them for, uh, this is our fifth project actually, uh, with, with them all over the state of Michigan. Uh, it's our second project in Livonia. They, uh, they purchased an existing, uh, bank branch on Seven Mile and, uh, did a total renovation of it. it. So we helped them find that location and have built three other locations with them as well, where we helped them locate them and then design and build them for them. So done quite a bit of work with them over the years. The credit union was started in 1951. It's the employees of the Daisy Air Rifle Company, which was started in Plymouth, Michigan. They now have 13 different locations all over the state and a little over a billion in assets. So, you know, we basically built the same particular prototype in all their different locations that we've done so far. And it's quite an attractive location and it's done really well for them. The closest other location is in Westland, and there's also one in Wickham as well that looks pretty much exactly like what we're proposing here. So that's kind of a little background on the project. And certainly I've got folks available, any kind of technical questions we can answer for you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for the presentation, and we will see if we have any questions from any of our commissioners for you regarding this petition. Anyone on the commission wishing to ask any questions or make any comments? Mrs. Smiley?
Yes, do you really need those three drive-through lanes?
Yes. Typically, what happens with credit unions, and I, this isn't my only credit union, I've got 50 different credit unions I work with all over the state. So typically, they have, the first lane is an ATM lane, and then they have, the other two lanes are drive-throughs. So this is very typical of what's being done right now, so.
Okay. All right, if you need them, you need them, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's obviously for the convenience of the members, so it's pretty typical.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions from any of our commissioners? I don't hear any questions at this time. Is there anyone in your audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? So you can click raise hand. I don't see anybody raising their hand. I'll go back to the commission one more time, see if there's anybody on the commission with any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tormina.
Question on the landscape plan, if I may. Looking here at the front of the building, what is the typical treatment along the foundation? I see that you have some distance here between the sidewalk and the face of the building, and, you know, it says rock edge, but I don't see any shrubbery, any landscape material. I'm assuming this is something that could be, that the landscape plan could be supplemented with additional plantings along the front of the building.
You know, if there's room, certainly not opposed to that at all.
I'm looking at this photo, and I don't know if this is the final treatment, but I have to say it's not appealing at all if this is the end result.
Well, no, that picture you're looking at is before any landscaping's even been done. So usually what they do around the building is they like to have rocks right up against it because if you have grass, it's difficult to maintain that. So, yeah, they like some kind of rocks up against the building, but I'm sure they're certainly not opposed to, you know, some types of bushes or various different landscaping other than right up against the building.
I'd make that suggestion, Mr. Chairman, with any resolution that might approve this item. I know we addressed a number of issues in that resolution, but maybe the submission of a landscape plan for the foundation, around the foundation of the building to include variety of plant materials, shrubs and flowers, and then irrigation, I think would be appropriate.
Hello, this is Leslie Accardo from PEA Group.
Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out that we do have a note on the drawings that indicate that foundation plantings will be detailed during the construction drawing phase. So there is an intent to put some shrubbery and perhaps even some sod in those areas, but it would definitely be landscaped.
It's right at the top of your screen there, Mr. Tormina.
Yeah, and I apologize if I missed that, but I did not see that. You're saying the note is up here?
Yep, scroll down just a little bit. It's right outside the building, actually.
There's an arrow pointing to the building. The north end of the parking lot. There it is. Right there.
Preservation plan.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to see it just to be plain rock, so I...
Okay, so do you think that's an adequate notation there, Mr. Tormina? Or should we just add the detail to our resolution just to ensure?
I would feel more comfortable if added to the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Thank you, Mrs. ... Is it Accardo?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure I pronounced your name correctly, and thank you for pointing that out to us. Is there anyone else with any questions for our petitioner on the commission?
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I guess it would be either from Mr. Accardo or Mr. Clark. During the study session, we talked about land banking the 16 parking spaces to the north of the site and immediately south of the service station that's on the corner. And we observed that there are a number of mature trees that are in that area now. And if those, I guess the first question is, are you willing to land bank those parking spaces, number one? And number two, if you do, are you willing to preserve the mature trees that are now in the burn between the service station and the site?
So, yes, absolutely, we're willing to do that. We actually would prefer the trees to stay there. And certainly with, as long as Mr. Cornmire agrees, we would like to land bank those parking spots, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a great comment, Mr. Ventura. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else with any comments or questions for the petitioner? Again, I'll just go around one more time, see if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Clark, you get the final word before we make our any resolutions. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just appreciate your time tonight, and I think an additional location for community financial will do very well there, so looking forward to working with you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. And if there is no other further, excuse me, if there's no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. That the request to construct a freestanding credit union with drive-through facilities within the parking lot of the Mid Five Shopping Center at 29441 through 29533 Middle Belt Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. One, that the preliminary dimension plan identified as drawing number C-3.0 dated May 14, 2021, prepared by PEA Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Two, that in accordance with Section 18.37J of the zoning ordinance, the shopping center shall bank the 16 parking spaces located on the north side of the credit union and defer construction of such parking spaces in order to preserve the existing berm and landscaping. Three, that the owner of the shopping center shall agree in writing to install such land bank parking within 180 days of a city council resolution in which it is determined that such additional parking is needed. Four, that the shopping center's entire parking lot shall be repaired, resealed, and restripped as necessary to the satisfaction of the inspection department, including any damage or missing curbs, shall be replaced, including all such curbs around the parking lot landscape island. Parking spaces shall be double striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length. Five, that within two years from the date of city council approval of this petition, the facade of the shopping center shall either be replaced or painted, or the owner shall submit plans required by Section 18.58 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance, number 543, as amended to model the exterior of the Mid Five Shopping Center. Six, preliminary landscape plan identified as drawing number L-1.0, dated May 14, 2021, prepared by PEA Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that additional full-size deciduous trees shall be planted in the southeast corner of the credit union property as deemed appropriate by the planning department. Seven, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. Eight, the underground sprinklers, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Nine, that the new work exterior elevations plan identified as sheath A-301 and A-802 both dated May 3, 2021, as revised, prepared by McDonald Associates, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Ten, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character, material, and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number 11, subject to the determination by the inspection department, the owner of the shopping center may be required to obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals for deficient parking and any conditions related thereto. Number 12, that the petitioner will need to provide the City of Livonia Engineering Department with drawings and details indicating the utility connections to the existing public water main, sanitary and storm sewers, and the impacts of these existing systems prior to obtaining permits for the proposed development. Number 13, that the proposed construction shall meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention requirements, and the petitioner shall secure all required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control. 14, that all pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed a height of 20 feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize straight light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. 15, that only conforming wall signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. 16, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. 17, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number 18, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to Section 19.10 of Ordinance Number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
That's a mouthful. Is there support for that motion?
Are we supposed to add for the plannings?
Yeah, Mr. Tormina asked that we be a little bit more detailed in indicating plantings around the front of the building. I think we could probably incorporate that into item number six on the...
Yeah, I agree. We'll do that.
Okay, so we have that slight change in item number six. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Bongero, supported by Mrs. McQ. There is opportunity now for discussion on the motion. If there is no discussion on the motion, then I will go to our secretary to call the roll on the motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Bongero.
Aye.
Commissioner McQ?
Aye.
Commissioner Ventura?
Aye.
Commissioner Smiley votes aye. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Chairman Lusha?
Votes aye, and motion passes. We'll go on to city council with an approving recommendation. Good luck to our petitioner with your project.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And you have a good evening now.
You too. Enjoy it.
Thank you for coming. And that takes us to the end of the public hearing section of our agenda. We have one miscellaneous item. Madam Secretary, this is approval of minutes.
Yes, the last item is the approval of the minutes of the 1,170th public hearings and regular meeting of the Planning Commission held on June 1 of 2021.
Okay, and I show all members were present at that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
移到
Moved by Mr. Long, supported by?
Support.
Mr. Bongero. If there is no objection to, from any of our commissioners, I think we can safely show six to approve that item. I don't see any objections, so I'll show six on approving the minutes of that meeting. And now that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
移到
Moved by Mr. Long and supported by?
Support.
Mrs. McQ. And again, I think it's probably safe to show six to approve that motion to adjourn by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McQ. If nobody is objecting, I don't see any objections, we'll show six on that. And that is now the end of our agenda. We have a motion to adjourn, so we would like to thank our Livonia Television staff for helping broadcast this meeting to the public, and of course, to our citizens here in the community for watching our meeting this evening. And with no further business to come before the Planning Commission, we will adjourn this meeting this evening at 8:30 PM and wish a good night to the community. Good night, Livonia.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.